It's time to get the meeting started. This is the regular meeting for the Jefferson Township Board of Trustees. It's Tuesday, June the eighth. The time is seven P M. This meeting was rescheduled from June first, two thousand twenty-one. I'd like to welcome everybody to the meeting. Let's get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Intervent.
Liberty.
And justice.
For all. At this time, I'd like to have a moment of silence to honor the military firefighters, road workers, and sheriff deputies as they serve our community here and abroad. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. McGuire.
Present.
Trustee Mayor.
Present.
Trustee.
Okay, first on the agenda, uh, we have no meeting minutes to approve. Fiscal officers' report.
Um, I sent you guys, uh, and I think Steve sent that out to you again, a fiscal on the report from last month, and I didn't update anything from, um, last, when we were supposed to have a meeting on the first. Uh, I just got, oh, you guys just came in this week, or was it this week? Last week. And, um, signed the bills. There's more in the cabinets to be signed, and the resolutions are still sitting up. They're not signed. I can't possibly think if you don't sign them. And speaking of resolutions, um, because I was accused of not doing a resolution correctly, whoever does the resolution from now should be the ones, I'm suggesting that be the ones responsible for writing them and writing the actions. I'm being responsible to give them to you guys, of course, signature, or to give them to me so I could put them in the mailbox with your signatures. So there won't be any, uh, problem, problems, because I have no idea of what these resolutions are about until the day of the meeting, so I can't fill anything out. Other than that, um, again, I'd like to emphasize we need to get the bills a little bit faster. I'm getting stuff signed faster. I'm getting stuff saying that we're, our bills are late because they're not been signed and not been gotten to me so, so I can give them to you guys. But this last time it's been because you guys hadn't signed them. Like that thirty-one I put out in the mail the other day, they were at least two to three weeks behind. So we need to get on those a little faster. Again, there's some in the mailbox waiting. There's probably handful. Other than that, that's all I have.
I'll run through, I'll run through those tomorrow afternoon, sign, uh, Tracy. I'll sign everything tomorrow afternoon.
Okay. I think Roy signed some, one, I think you had one in there, but there's, um, back recalculation, there's payroll.
I signed about, I signed about seven or eight here today.
Today?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So you must come in later.
Another signature.
Yeah.
I came through Friday and signed like thirty checks.
Yeah, well, those are already mailed. There's more in there now. That's it.
Uh, thank you, Tracy. Um, I downloaded all that paperwork you sent us. Uh, thank you very much, and I'd like to make a motion to accept the fiscal officer's report, pay the warrants and the bills and everything else that needs to be done.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, please.
Trustee McLaughlin.
Yes.
Trustee McGuire.
Yes.
Trustee Mayor.
Okay, that concludes the fiscal officers' report. Old business. Uh, trustees, we already discussed the meeting minutes issue in the work session. Is there any other discussion in this meeting?
Uh, old business? Yeah, I'd like to, uh, just let be known that, uh, next meeting.
Okay, I'd like to bring up, uh, issue of old business related to, I believe it was the fiscal officers' comments about the resolutions. Chief Wright, unmute, unmute your, uh, mic, please.
Yes, sir.
Did you author the resolution to hire our new zoning administrator, Justin Ozuski? This is for the record.
Well, for the record, I have no authority to do that.
So you did not author the resolution for that?
No, sir.
Okay. That's all I have under old business. Trustees, do you have any other old business?
Um, yeah, I guess, well, hold on, hold on, I gotta unmute myself.
Okay, let's move on.
I didn't, I'm sorry, I took my second unmute myself. Sorry about that. Um, yeah, I want to talk about, um, you know, some of the COVID money we spent, um, and I've heard in past meetings, I'm just kind of curious, haven't heard anything recent, where we stand with the fact the company H S I that did the doors, uh, the swipes, we did the locks and all that. Um, I think, I think it was like a seventy-one thousand dollar bill. I was just curious where we stand with that, is, is all, is all that fixed? Because, uh, I don't think it, most of it doesn't work. You know where we stand with that? That'd probably be a Steve question. Can I get a short response, please?
The programming has to be done to the system, and there wasn't a, a, a reason to do that when the alarm panel isn't fixed by the county. You asked me in the last meeting to go to the county. I went to the county and they are working on that panel. So until that panel's done, it, it, we have to then take the second step. I sent an email to all trustees and elected officials explaining this process that we're going to be following, and you all responded back.
Okay, so that's, that is the, uh, you speaking of the administration building, uh, Kaiman Center, correct?
It's all one system. So you have to program it as one system, even though we have alternate sites, remote sites. So you can't do one system and, and it's not a, they're not bifurcated, they're not separate system. So it's all one. It's all or none.
Okay, so how are we progressing on that? When do we think that'll be completed?
I don't have an estimate on the county. I, uh, stood with them and we went through the panel about two weeks ago.
Okay.
So, and they said they would get back to us, but it's in the hands of the county.
Okay. Well, keep us posted, please. Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Any other old business, trustees?
Um, uh, we agreed to have this job description written for those two jobs that, um, we're going to post by the next meeting? Is that what we decided on? I didn't have my notes win. Was, was that correct in the work session?
If you could have it, soon as you can get it.
Oh, okay. Okay, well, let me work on that. Okay. I do that. So I got Jim.
Okay. Does that conclude old business, trustees? Okay, moving on to new business. Uh, first up, introduction of the zoning administrator, Justin. Help me with this name. Justin, do you want to take a couple of minutes, introduce yourself, give us a little bit of your background?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for having me. Thank you, trustees. Thank you, elected officials. Thank you, Steve. Uh, my name is Justin Riley Olshewski. Um, I was the zoning administrator for Harrison Township in Montgomery County for eighteen years, um, and after a break there, I'm now, uh, eager to get started with Jefferson Township. Uh, if you have any zoning issues, concerns, questions, et cetera, um, feel free to give me a call at the office number, uh, extension one oh nine. I'd be glad to talk to you.
So do you go by Justin or Riley? Which one do you want to go by?
I go by Justin.
Okay. Cool, thank you.
Okay. So your, uh, voicemail and email and everything's set up, Justin?
Yes, everything is set up as of today, I think. I started to receive, uh, voicemails and, uh, copies of the voicemail via email as well, so everything's ready to go.
Okay. While you have the floor, how are you doing with the backlog of, uh, zoning applications?
So far, so good. Uh, I've got, you know, I had a stack of them. Uh, a lot of them were just questions, um, and clarifications of the zoning code or typical, uh, uses in specific zones, but as far as actual permits have gone through, uh, there was a new single-family residential unit on McClin Drive that was approved, um, a fence permit on South Union Road was approved. Uh, that's as far as I've gotten so far on the backlog and just trying to return phone calls and contact people that had questions.
Okay. But you've, uh, the people that have active applications, you've contacted them and let them know we've got, uh, somebody on the job and given me approximately eighty-eight.
Yes, correct, and, and they've been happy to talk to me and happy to have someone to talk to.
Okay. All right. Anything else, uh, for the meeting before we move on, Justin?
No, just, uh, glad to be on board and it's nice meeting all of you.
All right, welcome to Jefferson Township.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Is this, this, um, Grant Rider, is that going to be just a resolution that we're going to be talking about, or is it going to be on the new business?
We've got a resolution, uh, coming up, the next part of the meeting, to deal with that.
Okay.
Any other new business, trustees? Okay. Move on to resolutions. Tracy, may I have a resolution number? Where we're at?
I hope, I hope it's twenty-five. I can't tell you because you guys haven't signed the resolution. What I'm hoping is twenty-five.
Okay.
By the way, it's twenty-one, not twenty. Twenty-one dash oh twenty-five.
Okay, first on the agenda, twenty, resolution twenty-one dash zero two five. The Jefferson Township trustees approved the acceptance of resignation via email from Grant Rider, First Responders Grants LLC, effective two twenty-four twenty-one, and approved the hiring of new Grant Rider, Gatchel Grant Resources LLC, effective immediately. I move to adopt resolution number twenty-one dash zero two five.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a second on the motion. Questions?
So we can't split it, we're not going to split this resolution up like it was asked to be in? We can put this all in one resolution, right? In the work session, I asked to split this up. You're asking the trustees to make two decisions in one resolution?
Well, at this point, I'm okay with the way that the resolution.
I'm sure you are.
And you, uh, got an advanced copy of the agenda, Mr. McLaughlin. You had plenty of time to, uh, research this and vet that out.
We just got the agenda today, the, the resolution today.
Correct, thank you. And, um, you know, busy man, so I, I, I looked at all this stuff before the meeting, and yes, I see it, and as, as I asked in the work session to split this up. Two decisions in one, uh, one, one, one resolution.
Well, number one, you can't make a decision during the work session.
I didn't make a decision, I asked, I asked for it to be, I asked for it to be split. I was making a decision. I asked for it to be split. How's that making a decision?
Well, let's vote out this legislation, and if it gets shot down, then you can, we can come back to the table and rewrite it. Any other discussion?
So what do we have? What kind of information do we have on the, uh, replacement party? All you have is a contract. What do we, I mean, I, 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 that's right. I need a hearing, five-minute or ten-minute discussion from Wolf. Um, I'll refrain that question, I don't need a repeat of that.
Are you waiting for an answer from Wolf?
Nope.
Trustee Mayor.
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin. Trustee McGuire votes yes. We have two yeses and an abstain. Motion bat, or, uh, resolution twenty-one dash zero two five passes. Next up, we have resolution twenty-one dash zero two six. This resolution is approving the promotion of Kevin Humphrey, Humphreys, road worker classification two to road worker three, a change in compensation and being assigned more responsibilities for the job description of road worker three. I move to adopt resolution number twenty-one dash zero two six.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a second on twenty-one dash zero two six. Okay, roll call. Trustee McLaughlin.
Yes.
Trustee Man?
Yes.
Trustee McGuire votes yes. Motion passes three oh. Next on the agenda, twenty-one dash zero two seven. This resolution is approving the hiring of two seasonal part-time employees, Russell Gibson the second and Kyle Humphreys for the road department with compensation of fourteen dollars per hour. I move to adopt resolution number twenty-one dash zero two seven.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a second. Trustees, questions?
How many people are on the road department?
What's that?
How many employees are paid out of the road department?
You've got a copy of the head count in your packet. Wolf gave one with this week's report.
Yeah, his report, I'm looking at the resolution, I'm looking at this paper, we're adding the paperwork, I printed everything.
I think it's under the road department report that Steve put together.
Well, give me a second then.
I have a comment. These, uh, seasonal workers need to have a date when they start because that is needed to be put into pay corps when they start. It says it'll begin immediately, which means what date? It says again, immediately or higher, so I don't, you know, what day would that be? It makes sense to start them at the beginning of a pay period. It's easier to track that way. It's up to you trustees, but it needs to have a date. Same thing on a previous resolution, it would make more sense to have a date instead of saying as soon as possible, whatever the, whatever, however, what's written.
So, uh, you asked me to look it up, and I looked at the road department report from Wolf, and, uh, so we have seven employees at the present time, and you want to hire how many more?
Seven employees.
Uh, one, uh, well, hold on, let me count again. One, two, three, four, five, I'm sorry, six. Six.
You've got one full-time, you've got two part-time, and then you've got, uh, actually a third part-time, so there's four, and then you've got Wolf. So that still doesn't add up to seven.
I said, I corrected myself, and I said six, and you forgot about the guy that's out on P W C. He's still an employee.
That's included in the six, Mike.
I was, I was, I was talking to, uh, Trustee McGuire, thank you. So it is six, and you, and the resolution is to hire how many more?
Two part-time seasonal.
The road department, that's, we, that's way overstaffed. Back, back when I was on the roads, uh, that would not have, you would not have let that happen. You complained about the number of people we had. As people quit, we didn't replace them, and, um, I just don't see that, that being needed. So, and that's why I didn't say anything, because you, as soon as you announced it, you voted to move it, so I had to wait for the, uh, the first and the second so I could ask questions and make comments, because you didn't open up to the floor in the beginning.
Okay, any other discussion?
Is anybody going to put a date on the resolution?
Mr. Wolf, can you give us a date?
The, uh, resolution says date of hire, so that would be if you approved it today. Today's the date.
You can't make it tomorrow, you already had to close the business today. Whatever you want to do.
So I'll be working, as I was just saying, I was finished, I was in, uh...
Well, the employees aren't going to have any hours to turn in this week, so I think we can accommodate the payroll issue with, with the scheduling. Mr. Wolf, do these employees still need to give notice to their current jobs?
Uh, no, they do not. Uh, they've already given notice, waiting, but they're hopeful that they would get hired.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, what date did you say? I didn't hear the trustees agree upon a date.
June the ninth, if that's okay with everyone.
Okay, June the ninth. Okay. Roll call, please. Trustee McLaughlin. Mr. Man?
Yes.
Trustee McGuire votes yes. You have two yeses and an abstain. Okay, that concludes, uh, resolutions. Let's go to department reports.
Each one of you, trustee, should have got last month's report. It was sent to you this afternoon. We've been working, um, on repairing the, uh, old engine.
I'll call you back. My phone's going down.
Um.
Y'all on last, I'll call you.
We've had some problems with that.
Okay, thanks.
We had a, uh, latch on the door that busted.
What's going on with that?
And a couple minor things in the cab that busted, we got to take care of itself. Uh, we're going to start testing hose here within the next couple of weeks. That will occur once every year. We got a couple, um, new members that wants, new people that wants to apply. They'll become part of Jefferson Township. And I got a letter from Harrison Township today thanking us for participating in the funeral.
In the funeral.
Of the, uh... Battalion chiefs that passed away. And it was a very, very nice funeral.
Administrator, please mute user eight one four three six. Go ahead, chief.
Uh, we've been cutting the, cutting and trimming the grass at Station sixty. We picked up some trash along, uh, Business Park Drive last week, and the trash company come today and cleaned up the mess down there where the trash containers are that's on Business Park Drive and makes it look a hundred percent better. They took all the containers with exceptional one. Um, that's about it for right now. Mr. McGuire?
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Code enforcement, was Mr. McKee here?
No, he's not attending tonight.
Okay, we have a written report. Go ahead with, uh, road department report. Mr. Wolf?
Good evening, trustees, fiscal officer, and the community residents. I have my report from five nineteen to six oh eight, uh, that's been submitted. Um, it is, uh, four pages long. Um, uh, the road department is mowing, mowing and mowing. Nuisant properties, uh, have, have just, uh, grown like everybody sees it. Uh, the crews today had the roughest time having all the cicadas all over their clothing. I wish I had pictures to show you when I was out with them, but, um, what a, what a, what a, uh, an environment to work in. Um, but they are working very hard, uh, they're finding a lot of junk, uh, they're finding out that, um, after, um, COVID's lifted and everyone's trying to find a place to dump their trash because they do not have trash service.
Every night that I walk.
Um, so, uh, in the report, it explains that, uh, about, uh, right-of-way work that would the, the, uh, road department's doing, um...
It's just a little bit.
So you can go through that report and see where we're at. At the present time, uh, we, the road department thanks you, uh, trustees, for, uh, you know, being able to, uh, help us retain Kevin, uh, with our company, uh, and, uh, and thank you for bringing on the, uh, seasonal part-time, because you, you had passed the resolution allowing up to four hires, but we only found two applicants that were, um, you know, qualified. So, uh, we're going to work with that staff, uh, which is a little less than we had a year ago. Um, Mr. McKee does go out on leave, uh, starting this Friday, and he'll be gone approximately thirty-five to forty-five days minimum. So he works only as a part-time person in the road department, um, and we don't even have use of him. So he works only as a part-time person in the road department, um, and we don't even have use of him then. So these part-time staff are very needed, much needed to keep up with the, the, the mounting number for empty properties, uh, that are occurring in our town.